We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Strand?
Here.
Garrick?
Here.
Grinberg?
Here.
Pepcorn?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here.
Well, we had some big news today. We just had a press conference on this just a few minutes ago, but the city of Fargo, North Dakota, has been named the winner of the Georgetown University Energy Prize. A two-year nationwide competition that brought together 50 communities in rethinking the way America's small to medium-sized towns, cities, and counties use energy. In Fargo, we pride ourselves in expertly mining efficiencies. This honor is both an acknowledgement of the past successes and a challenge to do even better in the future. Our area researchers, youth, utility companies, citizens, and private industry combined their efforts to make today possible. I'm convinced that the Georgetown University Energy Prize award will serve as a catalyst in the Fargo metro area's quest to attain real sustainable energy savings and major carbon reductions. This is a huge day for Fargo and again places us on the national stage in recognition of our innovative concepts, the fusion of community partners' contributions, and the ability to work together for greater good. Now, we do have a representative, Professor Brandy from Georgetown University, and Malini will come up forward, and we're going to do the award just so the commission members that are coming here can see this, and the commissioner's going to come down, we're just going to take a picture. But you know, we oftentimes go to Washington for money. This is a time where money's coming to us.
Thank you very much. My name's Uva Brandis, and I'm the Executive Director of the Georgetown Energy Prize, and I just want to make it very clear that Fargo competed fair and square against 50 other communities across the country. It's a great, great demonstration of leadership, so congratulations to everyone in Fargo.
And we're honored because, as Bishop Pepcorn says, we're going for the six-time national championships, and this is just something that's a kind of forebearer of what might happen in the future. A reminder from the Auditor's Office, oh yeah, Steve always brings good news to us, that 2017 pet licenses expire in December 31st, so now it's time to renew your pet licenses for 2018. Health, Public Health is assisting North Dakota Department of Health Division on air quality with distribution of free residential random test kits, radium test kits. These kits are only for North Dakota residents and can be picked up during business hours Monday through Friday on Fargo-Cass Public Health. These kits help set a testing instructions and contact information. That has been responsible for the death of one of our people in the community. Also, Employee Health hosted a canned food drive early this month, and more than 340 items were collected to emergency food pantry. The police are in the news again. They hosted a cocoa with a cop on December 9th at the Fargo-Cass Public Health Building. The annual free event helps foster trusting and lasting relationships with the youth. Chief Todd was there with a little mushroom, marshmallow mushroom mustache. Chief Todd reports, "The first week of operations for the Police Department in the Border States Electric Building went well overall." He said there were a few expected hiccups and bumps, but everybody pulled together, and that extra effort helped with the transition. The citizens, the people who work at City Hall are pleased with that because a lot of the cop cars are no longer in our parking lots, they're out at the public, at the new building at Border States. The Andrew Cops and Kids Shopping Event was held December 17th at Walmart and 13th Avenue South. After the kids finished their shopping, they went to Copper Ridge Event Center for treats with their gifts were wrapped. So, great events for the children. Other thing is our fire department, you know, we hear all about fires out in California, but I just want to again praise our fire department. They responded to a house fire in North Fargo Sunday morning, and they were told a female was in the basement of the house that unable to escape. And our crew was able to enter through the egress window and locate the victim, and they were able to get her out of the egress window and turned over to the ambulance personnel. I think this is, with all your gear and equipment, it's a great honor or respect to your department that they could do that, Chief, and I just want to pass on to the department, great job. But we are seeing more fires in the wintertime now, and we have to be a little bit careful about electrical, right?
Always be careful. Three main causes of the fire, men, women, and children.
Men, women, and children, no pets in there? We'll move on to the Order of Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving Items 7 and 26 from the Consent Agenda to the Regular Agenda for further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2017 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 62 excluding Item 7 and 26, which have been moved to the Regular Agenda? Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Second.
Mr. Pepcorn and Grinberg. Roll call, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll get to, let's see, we're probably not ready for public hearings yet.
You want to do Planning Commission?
Oh, yep. Probably harder, or what?
67.
57?
67.
Oh, okay. We can go to the 67, Item 67. Recommendation to appoint Miranda Tassa to the Planning Commission. You have my recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, what we did a little bit different on the Planning Commission, I'll tell, I'll let Commissioner Grinberg talk about it, because you did a little different selection, you went through many of the candidates, and you interviewed top three that you guys felt you wanted to move forward to me.
Yes, and Nicole's in the room, she'd like to add to this, but you know, in a sense, what we've put forward is a new process, if you will, for selection to the Planning Commission that's quite honestly more open and transparent, so that people understand there's an opportunity. And then, we formed a committee that made recommendations to Mayor Mahoney, and what we looked at was tenure on the Commission presently, geographic location, and experience, and came up with a recommendation. And then, we interviewed three, I believe, potential candidates, and then looking at the mix of the current Planning Commission, made that recommendation that's before us tonight.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. I missed Item 63, we could go back to that. Commissioner Grinberg would like to discuss the election reform proposals.
That might take more than five minutes, so.
That's okay.
So, I know, thank you, Mayor Mahoney, I know a number of you were at an event, was it last week, that was pursuant to a discussion we had here a month or so ago, about more public input to the process of any forthcoming proposals for election reform. As I indicated at that last meeting, that my intention was to make motions before the end of the year, so that's the premise of why I put it on the agenda tonight, so that, again, from my perspective, we move forward and either make additional motions and move beyond this topic. And so, that's kind of the premise where I'm coming from. I don't know if there was any comment from the prior meeting, last week, that wants to be shared, but before you are two documents that were shared at the last meeting, this was on the agenda, and my attention tonight is to make two motions. One is for the voters of Fargo in the June 18 election to consider adding two commissioners to the City Commission. Fairly straightforward language that was drafted by Mr. Johnson. And the second, then, voters, if they decided in June of 18 for the election of June 2020, would pattern the election process used by the Cass County, for example. That if you want to be a City Commissioner, there'll be two elections if there's a number of candidates that require a June to primary, or June to general election process. So I could add some additional comments on that, but that is my intention tonight, to make these two motions.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Grinberg, I agree that it's time to put this to rest, or take it off the shelf and put it to the people. Depending on how the votes go, I'm prepared also to advance a motion to get it on the table. The other recommendation from the task force, which would be to have the people consider approval voting, so that will be a third motion. It might be moot by the time we're done with your motions.
Mr. Pepcorn?
I have a question on how much will it cost? I guess that would be my question. Obviously, adding two commissioners, you can do the math pretty easily on that. And once again, I'll repeat, I had two emails, I have had little contact from, when I'm walking around town, I have little interest from people as far as changing anything, and my question is, what's the compelling reason? Do people feel unserved? Is our city not succeeding? I believe this is just a solution in search of a problem, and so, I don't believe we should make changes. I guess my example is, the University of Nebraska changed football coaches. It doesn't always turn out for the best. And so, I think we should be serious and ask, why would we change it? And so, I agree that with five of us, we have a lot of responsibilities, but I think that's a good thing, and I think most of us don't feel overburdened, and I think enjoy the involvement. So, I would, I think we have a very successful model, and I would, I hope you think twice about this, because we are doing very well, and it's because of the system that we have. And to just change it because you think we should, I don't agree with that. However, this is just giving the voters an opportunity, so I do agree with that, but I think we've got a pretty good thing going here. Thank you.
Mr. Garrick?
As far as the runoff, we've tried that, it was rejected not too long ago. Approval, or, excuse me, with adding commissioners, the only reason I would see adding commissioners would be if we went to a ward-mix system, which the majority of cities our size have. Four wards, represented by one commissioner, three at large, generally, the people at large would serve a six-year term or a longer term than the commissioners who would serve in the wards, to include the mayor. That way, you'd have three people running every election cycle. So if the wards are off the table not being part of that motion, then I can't see how I would support it. But, there is the initiated measure process, and if there is an outpouring of support for certain ideals, you only need 2,000 signatures in order to get that on the ballot, which is a pretty low threshold. So, if nothing comes of it today, then you can certainly get that on the ballot yourselves by having a motivated small group of people to do that.
Steve Sprague, I just want to know, do you know how much an election would cost? I've heard figures, I think of 25,000 or something like that? I just thought you might have a better number.
Every election is a little bit different, but generally, the election costs are in the 30,000 to 35,000 range to run an election.
Okay, that's, I'm sure Pepcorn would ask that.
Yep, but just to clarify, prior to Commissioner Garrick's point, one of the decisions to follow the process we have now was to save the cost of an election. This proposal will not add the cost for an election, because it's using existing elections, June and general, and November. Correct. I think your proposal is to use what the county has, which is a primary election in June, and then the general election. So it's clear, we're not committing, if you vote for this, and the voters approve, another election. Correct.
So, we could start with motions, I think everybody?
So I would move the first one, from four commissioners to six. I'd ask Eric Johnson if I miss any major points, but in essence, the June primary of 18, voters will be asked, if we approve this tonight, to approve adding two commissioners that would go into the election process for June of 2020. At that point forward, we would be moving to six commissioners and a mayor.
Second.
Further discussion?
Just for clarity, is that including or not including instituting a mixed award system?
It does not include a mixed award system.
Okay.
John, Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of what I'm thinking right now is just simply try honor the process, where we went to the people and created a task force and asked their recommendations. It's going to be, you know, I'm looking forward to, if we go there, to the public dialogue and debate. I'll qualify it, though, I'm not sure where I will land personally on some of these topics when I go into the ballot box myself. When it comes to the seven commissioner topic, I think I see the value to it, but I also feel five works well. But I want to honor the process with regard to approval voting. I have a lot of serious curiosities about it and questions, but I want to honor the process of us having asked citizens to pass recommendations to us to take to the people. So, that's where I'm at, is to see what the people want. If they want more representation, if they want a different approval, a different method of voting, we serve the people, and I won't presuppose where they will land, or where we will land.
Issue for six.
Can I just, I just want to say a couple more things. So, it's going to cost more money, correct? I mean, without a doubt, this is going to cost more money. And it's also going to be more campaigns. The majority, well, first of all, I mean, seriously, we had no, I had no contact, but this is going to be a primary and a regular election, so if we, if anybody that wants to campaign, you're going to have to campaign for almost a whole year. That's ridiculous. For a city commission position, I, that's just, well, anyway, that's just my, I'm just giving my opinion, but to me, to have a primary and a regular election for city commission is just, that's just, that's too much. That's just me.
Just to clarify, I appreciate the comments. This motion is just to vote on adding two, and the next one will be, to your point.
So, my comment, the election committee that met had a variety areas, they had difficulty agreeing on, so to me, a lot of times, the ward issue, the different issues, it was hard to get consensus. This is probably the one item that came to consensus on, is to have six people, and to me, part of the dischange is, the previous mayor that was on the committee, and the previous commissioner that was on the city, did not have a administrator and assistant administrator, so I think in some ways, they felt that they, you needed more people on the commission to work different things. But, the reality is, with Mike and Bruce, they do a lot of our work, and as commissioners, I think there's not as much falls on the commissioner's tasks to do things. I think the present system works well, so I'm not really excited about two more, but that's up to the people to decide, or how people want to go. So, if there are no other comments, roll call vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No. Next recommendation?
And the next resolution before you would simply, maybe not simply, but change the election process to pattern the primary election, and then to the general in November, as experienced by those who want to serve on the Cass County Commission. So I'd make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion did not advance. Do we have a third motion on approval voting? John?
Mayor, I move to direct the city attorney to draft the appropriate form of resolution proposing for city commission approval, and thereafter, for citywide vote, an amendment of the Home Rule Charter of the city that would change the method of voting and election of the mayor and city commissioners to an approval voting method, voting system in which, rather than asking voters to cast a single vote for each seat that is up for election, the voters are allowed to vote for as many candidates as they wish.
Is there a second? Is there a second? That motion also dies for lack of a second. Do we have any other discussion on the election, that do we want to change any reforms that goes forward to election, to the public?
Do you want to be full-time?
No. I think we can go to public hearings now. Public hearing number one is hearing on a dangerous building located at 1011 Fifth Avenue South. Bruce Carlson to explain.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, staff, and guests. You should have received the packet on the dangerous building notice, and this is the hearing to establish that 1011 Fifth Avenue South is a dangerous building, as stipulated by Dangerous Building Ordinance 2104 of this Fargo Municipal Code. This hearing is required under 2104 for the purpose of allowing any interested parties, including the owner of the property, to appear and show cause, while the city of Fargo should not remove this building. The inspections Department has taken its action due to the amount of damage on the building, and the department feels that this building meets the criteria for a dangerous building. I've included in your packet the six points that the inspections Department has taken to get to this point. In your packets, you'll find my Dangerous Building Notice. Article 210404 requires the inspection department to give a 30-day notice to the owner of the property prior to any action by the commission. Our timeline will show that the notice went out on October 2nd, 2017, and there's been no action by the owner of the property within the next 30 days, which expired on November 1st, 2017. Also in your packets, you'll find photos of the property, as well as a letter of determination from our assessors department. Article 210401 stipulates that if the building meets the definition of a dangerous building, and it meets many of the criteria mentioned, it must be demolished or repaired. Assessor's letter states that repairs will exceed the 50% criteria of the current value, and 210402 stipulates that if the costs to repair exceed the 50%, the building can be ordered demolished or repaired. We have taken the path of demolition due to the amount of repair required to this building. Inspection stance will not be to always go down this path. There are the paths to take, such as repair, but we've looked at the building, there's all the repairs that would be required, there's just too many on this building. We've also conferred with the planning department as to what it would like to do to this property, and it agreed with our stance. A little bit about the property, it's currently vacant and uninhabitable due to conditions and the current inspections order. Deterioration is extensive. Building was constructed in 1897. It's a two-story building, originally is a single-family home, and previously converted to a rental unit. There is much deterioration in the property, I won't list it all, structural damage, structural deterioration, interior finish deterioration and damage, and attempted abandoned construction and remodeling. There's a timeline for the events, did you want me to go through the timeline?
We're fine.
Okay. Upon finding, your finding for the owner to comply with this demolition, you're required by 214 to notify the owner of your determination, and if that owner fails to comply with the order within 10 days, city commission can order staff to take action on demolition and assess costs back to the property. I suggest you agree with my notice and find this to be a dangerous building, and to direct city attorney to repair findings of fact in this matter is required in the Dangerous Building Ordinance. I also ask that you direct staff to proceed with all necessary measures to secure removal of the building, should the owner fail to do so. Commission action does require a ten-day allowance for action, and Article 210406 also allows court action if that is the course the commission desires. 210412 is allowance for the owner to appeal city commission action, and I think that does give the owner another 30 days. I've included in the packet a suggested motion, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak, the city commissioner regarding this building? Is the owner here or no? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Commissioner Garrick?
So the owner's out of town, is that the case, or from?
What was that?
The owner doesn't live here in Fargo? Is that what I understand?
The owner, it's now foreclosed, and the bank has taken possession.
Okay.
And it's also in a trust, and we notified all owners, we posted the letter on the building. We have had several inquiries from the public.
Yeah.
About this building, and we've offered them to come to the previous commission meeting, which was on agenda, and this one, to state their case. We had one that said they were going to purchase the property. She backed out at the last minute, said she was going to come here and then didn't show.
So we haven't heard from the owners themselves at all, in this process?
Not at all.
So does the endgame state that we basically are going to own this place, because they, they're not paying tax on it, are they?
I think, I believe this one is one year out of.
Okay. So ultimately, we're going to end up with this land?
End up what?
Are we going to end up with this land ultimately? Is that the case?
Yeah, our option is to demolish the building, and then it's open for sale, and most of these are really nice properties to be rehabbed. The city of Fargo's taken several of them and put new homes on them.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Strand?
So, to clarify on Commissioner Garrick's question, Mr. Charleston, there's not a bank owning title to this?
There is a bank.
There's a bank. So wouldn't they maintain ownership of the lot?
They, it is currently up for sale. We've had, all the interested parties have come through Realtors, and that's actually how we got in the property, to see the condition. We posted as a dangerous building, and then they allowed us to come in with them. So most of them are aware that, of our order, and they know that they can come forward with a plan to provide an engineer to rehab this house. So there is an option to take, to take a repair or fix stance on that.
Eric Johnson?
Yeah, Commissioner and Commissioner Garrick as well. Yeah, the Dangerous Building Order won't change ownership. We do get to assess the cost of abating the nuisance of the demolition against the property, much like taxes, and there's always the possibility that the owner says, well, with the cost of demolition and the other taxes, it's possible that it gets forfeited to the county and ends up back in the city's hands as an empty lot. So it's possible it ends up back with the city under those circumstances, but no, the bank, bank could continue their foreclosure process, either take on the demolition themselves, that's a possibility, that's happened in the past, and they bear the cost, and you know, we can wipe our hands clean of it at that point. Or they can allow us to demolish and assess the cost against the property, and then they would pay the tax if they wanted to retain ownership.
Yeah, just following up on what often happens is that, depends on the amount of the demolition, so if it costs $50,000 to tear this down, then there's a $50,000 assessment against the property. You know, if it comes up for a county tax sale, if someone doesn't pay that, then it ends up with the county, and they're willing to transfer to the city, but you know, sometimes it was a clear lot, now someone's interested and may buy it on a tax sale for some amount, and then build a home on it. So, it's, yeah, it's some mortgage company in Houston, so there's, they've probably given up on the property.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Make a motion to determine this to be a dangerous building, direct staff and city attorney to take action, order its removal before January 15th, 2018, and direct appropriate staff to secure the removal of this building at that time, should the owner fail to do so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Hearing on proposed suspension of Route 35, First Amendment to Agreement of Transit Services, North Dakota State University to provide on-demand service, TapRide. Julie Bummelman and Assistant Transit Director Matthew Peterson to explain. Or Matthew to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. So this one's a little bit different, because we're proposing to remove Route 35, which is a evening route up on the NDSU campus that students use along El Brick Boulevard to get from the library and other facilities back to like their dorm rooms, some student housing south of 12th Avenue. In most cases, they have to walk a couple blocks. What we're proposing is a suspension of Route 35 for the second semester of NDSU, the NDSU academic year, and bringing in an alternate service called TapRide. TapRide is an on-demand service, you could call it an on-demand, similar to like Uber Lyft, I suppose, it's a rideshare program. Students would be able to download the app on their phone and be able to request a ride anytime between the hours of operation, which is what we would replace this service with. For example, up on the screen, you can see this is what current Route 35 looks like. It's a pretty limited service area for the size of the NDSU campus. What we're proposing with TapRide is that we would actually zone off the entire NDSU campus, including a lot of the student housing just north of Dakota Drive, and students, or any rider for that matter, would be able to request a ride, pickup, drop-off, curb to curb. to curb, so to speak, with the use of TapRide or with the use of a mobile phone. The entire service is provided by a company called Double, Double Map. We've been working with them since September to run this pilot. This is a, it's a new way of running transit service. It's a very innovative way of running it. We would actually remove our 35-foot vehicle that we have on that route right now and put a cutaway vehicle, similar to what we use in our paratransit demand response, which would help reduce the cost of operating. The reason we want to look at this area for the pilot is if this is successful, we would have the option of looking at this type of a service in some of our more rural areas of town, some where we are traveling large mileage or putting quite a bit of mileage on some of our routes and having lower rides per hour. So the idea is to kind of help save some of those resources or use those resources a little bit better. Any questions?
Is there anyone, President, who wishes to speak to this regarding this proposal? Is there anyone, President, to speak? Hearing, nobody want to speak? I close public hearing. Commissioner Garrick.
What's the per-hour cost compared to a bus?
We haven't been able to calculate that yet because it's as a pilot. So what we did is we signed a six-month contract with Double Map and their service. It's a cloud-based service, and so what we're paying for there is all of the computing software that they have, you know, on the internet, right? When students request rides, it's an automated algorithm that goes in and determines when the pickup and drop-offs are going to occur. It also pools riders, so if it becomes, if the system becomes overburdened with several ride requests at one time, it'll actually put those students in queue and notify them. And then what it will do is, as those come up, it notifies them on their phone, lets them know that the vehicle is there, so they can actually stay in the building and not have to walk down a lot of the streets at night. But we have not been able to do the cost comparison yet, other than the fact that we know the cost...
Julie, help me out. On paratransit, our cost is two-thirds of a regular vehicle?
The vehicle operation is about two-thirds the cost of a normal fixed route vehicle.
Mr. Grinberg?
Just to build on Commissioner Garrick's point, so this is all built on their budget, so there's no implication to the budget because we're trying something different?
Yeah, so what we did is, there was a small capital cost for the actual use of their software. And then the reason we want to suspend Route 35 is that actually pays for the operation cost of TapRide. So we worked with NDSU. We brought this to Bruce up at NDSU, explained to him the concept. He was very interested in it, and so we're amending. That's the other part of this public hearing, is the amendment to our NDSU contract, which says that we're allowed to suspend Route 35 for the second half of the NDSU academic year and replace it with this service. And so it's pretty much a wash as far as operation cost goes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious about when the next levels of these discussions will surface and when we will be comparing costs of rideshare programs with public transit as we know it. And then that leads me more directly to the question about this is, was Uber, were rideshares such as Uber or Lyft compared as alternatives? And feasibility for this option? Or is that not possible to have those discussions, or do you anticipate someday? I do, but do you?
We have. There's been quite a bit of work going on with Uber and Lyft and those types of things and integrating with fixed route transit systems. And then there's this other micro-transit concept or TapRide concept where the transit agency can actually operate the rideshare program itself. We did not have conversations with Uber or Lyft. We went out, we spoke with two different companies. One elected not to give us a bid. It just wasn't worth it to them. And so Double Map did give us a cost for this pilot and was willing to work with us. Sorry, I lost my train of thought.
That answers my question. I suspect we all know that in these changing times, a lot of these discussions will be forthcoming.
Yeah, they will. I mean, it's becoming very popular with the on-demand type service that people want to see. You know, and again, with NDSU campus, you know, with everything that happens up there in the large area, it's really difficult to service everything with a standard fixed route. So we needed to look for different alternatives and try something, which is why we're doing that, the six-month pilot. Our plan is also to come back around March-April timeframe with some statistics on how the service is operating, any cost, anything like that, and then we can decide if we wanted to move forward with that project on NDSU campus and other routes if needed.
Mr. Garrick?
John's point is an excellent point, because I think that this could be a pilot not only for this area, but it could be an idea for the entire City of Fargo, using smaller vehicles or even private vehicles on private businesses to fill the need that buses have traditionally filled, going back, you know, 70 years or whatever it is. So I'll make the motion to approve the request of motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Pepcorn? Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Renaissance Zone Project for Wild Terra Cider and Brewing Company LLC for the commercial lease project located at 612th Street North. Derek, the point to explain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is a Renaissance Zone lease application. This is for Wild Terra Cider and Brewing Company LLC, again, located at 612th Street North. They are looking to occupy a space. It's actually the old stable building attached to the Matheson's Building. A little over 4,000 square foot facility, and looking to occupy the space, actually, I think they're actually open right now. The applicant estimates $15,000 in income tax exemption over the five-year term. Again, as a reminder, all of our lease applications need to go through a rehab or new construction project. Again, this one was under DFI 1213 MP LLC, which was a stable property and approved by the City of Fargo on January 30th, 2017. Breezy with Wild Terra is here. If you have any questions about their business, as well as the owner representative, Mike Zimny, and we are looking to recommend approval for this commercial lease application. Happy to answer any questions.
Just on the property tax exemption, did anybody apply for that?
So this is a part of the larger one, so the owner, DFI 1213 MP, they will be eligible for the property tax exemptions. This is just a lease, which is the income tax. A lot of times, they rope it into their lease, so they're saving some...
So that hasn't been done yet, or no?
It has been done. They are getting final approval by the state as we speak.
Anyone, President, who wishes to speak to this Renaissance Zone? The renters want to come up and say anything? I know the TV stations were in there at 6:00 in the morning, so I congratulate you guys for getting up early, but... Is there anyone, President, who wishes to speak? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
Let's go move.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I was wondering if there'd be samples.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Good.
Okay. Mr. Garrick? Nope? Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
I thought this is the point, John, where they throw an apple at you and hit you in the head or something. Application by Cathedral Lofts LLC for a payment in lieu of tax exemption on a project located at 719 7th Street North, which the applicant will use to operation for a 34 one-bedroom apartment project, continued from the 11/2017 regular meeting. Jim Gilmore to explain. Ed Benhushka, so you don't look like Ben.
Ed Ben asked me to come up, cover this one. He wasn't sure he was going to be back from the county. I think he is here if you have questions for him. The application really hasn't changed. It's the same that you considered four weeks ago. Our tax exempt committee did sit down with the developer, kind of looked at the policy. The tax exempt committee did not change their recommendation, which was previously for approval, and so it's back before you tonight. Mr. Craig is here if you want to, Jesse Allen, if you want to address this at all. But, again, the application really hasn't changed from what it was four weeks ago.
But I was aware that Commissioner Strand had brought up a policy of St. Louis Park, and I was under the word that Mike Redinger had done an evaluation of it, which brought some of this into affordable housing, certain percentage. If we looked at the model that St. Louis Park had, it was very similar to that.
At St. Louis Park, we looked at that information. You know, their policy applied to, you know, housing where they're providing greater subsidies, such as, you know, community development block grant funds, home block grant funds, in some cases exemptions running longer than that. So, you know, and their rents were probably not that much different than what are proposed for this, for this project in terms of what they felt was affordable. As a city, we haven't, you know, defined what we consider affordable. There's a lot of different definitions. The tax exempt committee looked at those. I think these rents, some of them are, you know, probably about out of market in Fargo. Someone making 50% of the median household income in Fargo appears that they could afford to live in this housing unit. Someone who's making, you know, very low income, you know, they would not be able to afford this apartment.
Jesse?
Commissioners, I feel like the roles have kind of reversed here. Usually, I'm the one up here kind of maneuvering, trying to get city policy changed, looking for flood waivers, alley vacations, things like that, and now it's kind of where I'm trying to go steadfast on the policy. And City Commission, City staff are kind of trying to change policy midstream here. So the discussion today is about Cathedral Lofts and whether it meets current city policy or not. It not only meets city policy, goes above and also qualifies as affordable housing, as Jim stated, which is not a requirement for approval. The land it sits on's been zoned DMU since 2009, so there's no zoning change required in this. The DMU designation was placed on land to entice development, which is exactly what I'm trying to do here. We talked a little bit about investing in depressed areas, contains a great deal of risk that either developer take on. The city would collect probably about $3,300,000 over the next 55 years on this property in real estate taxes. I think the one thing that's come up a lot in both the Tax Review Committee and things like that is the low-income housing component, and there's a lot of risk above and beyond a simple development of a regular housing with the low-income housing. So the one thing I want to ask or leave you guys to think about this is, if you're truly trying to entice the construction of low-income housing downtown, who do you think will take on an even higher risk with that type of program if they can't trust the city to uphold the current policy? Can I ask, answer any questions?
Any questions, the Commissioners? Thank you. Is there anybody else wishes to speak to this project? Mr. Pepcorn, you want to report with the tax exempt committee? They talked about policy and what policy is, and oftentimes developers work six months to get to this point. What were the comments out of your committee?
Well, and we had a good, we had a good discussion about, you know, that if we want to have low-income housing in the downtown, we're going to have to make a conscious effort to do that. And so if you don't mind, I'm going to give you my, I'm deeply conflicted on this because if we follow policy, this is not in the downtown. If we, if you ask Jim if this is in the downtown, it does not, is this location within the...
It is.
It is.
I mean, if you look at the, the plan was adopted in 1996. It was just outside that little notch, however...
So, no, no, just stop.
It was changed though, Dave. So tell them the rest of the story.
The rezoning happened in 2008 or 2009, and the plan you adopted several weeks ago did have this property within the area of the downtown. So, so, yeah, you can, you can use the old one or the new one. It's up to you.
So Jim, is that, so now it is within the, it is within the downtown zone?
Yeah, it is zoned, downtown makes use, and it was also within the boundary of the downtown in the plan that you adopted this past month.
Once again, if you don't mind, then, I'm just deeply conflicted because I have a problem with us giving incentive. I think it's a great project, but to be using tax incentives to build apartments, that just does not make sense. And if that's the policy, then we, then I have to support it. But we got to, we got to change that because for us to give incentives to build apartments, market rate apartments, that's not right. And so that's just my opinion. So I'm, once again, the other thing is, I deeply respect Jesse because he's a local developer and he's, he lives it. And so that's the other challenge, and his point is true, but I'm just saying, there's, we cannot be given incentives to build apartments. That's, we, that is not an area that we should be doing right now. That's just my opinion. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Grinberg?
Well, I just, as long as we're on debate of policy, it took us nine months to get a policy. When Commissioner Strand and I joined the commission, and for not following the policy, then we had to go back to the table. But in my opinion, based on what Mr. Craig said, it's incumbent on us to provide a stable environment and incentive where appropriate. And so I think one of the things we need to take away from this discussion is, maybe our policy should be revisited every two years so that we have consistency for two years and not the whim of a commission who doesn't like a project creating discussion around a policy. And my suggestion is a two-year cycle that allows for two new commissioners who are seated to have a seat at the table and define that policy for the next two years. And so I think it's very important that we understand each other's perspectives on this, but it's our job to provide, you know, an environment that is conducive for growth. And so that would be my additions to this debate.
Well, the other issue is the downtown study reveals that we need 4,500 new residents downtown, and we have been pushing for apartments as well. So one of the questions last time the commission has, is it affordable? It is affordable and does qualify for affordable housing. Low-income housing is in a different area and oftentimes has federal programs surrounding that. So I think the debate some people get into is, does follow policy and is what we have on our books right now. Mr. Garrick?
One of the arguments is that our policy is a moving target. Our TIF policy was the same for over a decade. The longest incentive in the City of Fargo was 37 years. It's still going on. We've been doing this for a long time. Government is notoriously slow, and since I've been Commissioner, not much has changed as far as this goes. The discussion has changed, but the policy sure hasn't, not very much anyway. As far as following the policy, you know, we gave a parking ramp exemption. That was not part of our policy. It wasn't in there. We gave an exemption for apartments and office buildings and retail stores. In our policy, specifically, we would not give pilots to those things. So some people want to say we're not following our policy, it behooves them. Other people say, well, you shouldn't follow your policy because it's not behooving me this time, so what's it going to be? I think you just make the right decision at the time. And I think, Dave, I think your gut feeling is quite correct. You know what I mean? So it's on you. I think people know how I'm in about, but I want people to understand that it's always what the policy, when it helps me, when it helps you. But it's always, you know, if it's not the policy that helps me, then we shouldn't follow it. I'm sick of and tired of that.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple different points, and then I have a motion. We're not reinventing the wheel by talking about building an affordability component into housing projects that utilize public funds. There are numerous communities that do this. St. Louis Park is only one of them that I happened to find out about more recently. But our own consultant with our city downtown master plan said that he knows of several, or at least that's how I heard him, that, and I understand we're reaching out to them to find out who those cities are, what their policies are, how they implement them, and so on. And so I'm still there. In my mind, if you're doing market apartment developments, it's not the job of the public sector to help fund that or help make it easier to be profitable doing that. That's just my view. I still would like to know what the benchmarks are from what other cities do. And I'm conflicted as well, voting against an existing policy. I want the policy to direct us, but it's no secret, since I joined this commission, this is the one thing I've asked for of the Tax Exempt Review Committee, one of the things. And it was brought up immediately back last year and hasn't yet been acted on. So that's a work in progress, whether this discussion will go forward on this topic of affordable housing with projects in downtown that utilize a public benefit or tax exemption or incentive. The map issue isn't a hill to die on, but I couldn't help but notice, even in the packets handed out last meeting where we discussed this two, a month ago, that it isn't in the map that we publish as part of the qualifying district for pilots. It's outside of the map. Now, since then, I've been apprised that we, the city has redefined the downtown mixed-use zoning criteria and includes that little section above Seventh Avenue and, and the west side of Seventh Street, east side of Seventh Street, the west side behind the nursing school. But it wasn't in the map published, yet I understand that's just a detail that is, is a small little one that isn't a deal breaker, but I think the map should be updated for that. Lastly, our challenge is workforce development. If we have 4,000 to 5,000 need apartments, need for apartments downtown for workforce development, we need apartments that accommodate in the spectrum of salaries and wages people get in this community. And, and when we say that the formula is right now that somebody on a certain percentage of, of income can move into these, some of these apartments, it doesn't mean they can afford a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom, they might be in the small efficiency for all we know. And then, you know, so there's so many moving parts to this, I'm just not comfortable voting on this yet, and, and I want to be drive, directed by the policy. To my knowledge, we're still researching what other cities do, so we have benchmarks going forward about how we could do what others do and how successful they are. My discussions with the mayor of St. Louis Park and others there, the communications is it's entirely successful and people have exceeded the expectations of the program when they develop apartments. So there, there's good sides to this. So that said, I, one more time, move that we place a moratorium on, on approval of, of tax exemptions and incentives, especially pilots, for apartments in the downtown district until such time as we've thoroughly vetted them and finalized any new recommendations for changes going forward.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I will not support that motion. We're going to send a dangerous message to the community and developers by putting such a moratorium down. We have before us tonight a project that's asking for approval that followed the process. That is the decision we should make tonight, not a moratorium and send mixed messages about the future and the growth of our city. That is a misguided motion.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just go, John, you were out of town, you weren't able, at the last tax exempt review, we had a very good discussion, everybody that was there, and it is an important issue. What we talked about, so to give you an example, 4,500 in downtown, that's the goal. Well, to me, 10% of that should be either low, low-income or workforce housing, and so that's what we talked about. The, the, one of the things we talked about, John, and anybody else that was there, feel free to jump in, but our Fargo Housing Authority has done an excellent job in the downtown. Jim has an excellent map showing the, the census of the number of low-income housing units in downtown Fargo already. They did a great job in the eighties, and so we, and beyond shelter, what we have to do now is make sure that we are working with them, with our tax exempt review, we actually have to have them participate, so we have, so we are working together. Here's my fear, John, if we tell developers, you have to include low-income housing in each, some projects, that is not a viable thing. And so we have to have a flexible way, and, and I think if you start piling on too many things on the developers, additional things, I, I think we have to be sensitive to that, that, and, and, but I think we all agree that it's an issue, but, but we have to make sure that we're working within some of the things that we already have in effect. So I don't know if that's a good summary, Mr. Mayor, that was kind of a, a quick summary, but that's, we had a good discussion and we'll have it again, and, and we'll make sure that you're there, so, okay, thank you.
Well, I'm just going to speak as a member of that committee, is the fact is, is that, John, what I'd like from you is give me a viable alternative for that. This project, one-bedroom, Jesse says his one-bedrooms are, are filling all the time, it's a workforce affordability is what this particular apartment is we're talking about. If he scratches the project, he's taking blight out, it'll be a parking lot that pays no taxes, so we'll go from a project that's viable for workforce apartments that will basically be a parking lot. Second element is in a policy decision, if you put moratoriums on, most of our documents and policy, our living documents can be changed. So if you find something in National League of Cities that makes promise can be done in our community, that's something you should bring forth and should be discussed thoroughly, but it doesn't have to put a moratorium on all our policy, it just is an opportunity to bring new programs to our community, which I think you're working on. So I'd rather have you, if you want these types of discussions, say, hey, let's try this. I got a developer that spent six months on this project, he's bought the land, he's ready to go. It's a little unfair to him to say, let's put it on a moratorium for six, another six months. I mean, that's, that's not how developers work, is they have a time and a timeline. Second element is we've had good growth in downtown area, and I just get a little concerned that we suddenly change, we say make a policy, takes nine months to make a policy, finally make a policy, and they say they follow the policy, and then when it comes to the final moment, say, whoops, we're going to pull that policy away, I don't think that's fair to people. So I'll let you decide on that, but somebody want to make comment else? Roll call vote.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask, can you reread what the, what the vote is?
Put a moratorium.
It's the moratorium.
Please, a moratorium on approval of tax exemptions and incentives.
Okay.
Start over.
You have to swear again.
No, it's okay. Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Grinberg?
No.
Pepcorn?
No.
Mahoney?
No.
Move the application as submitted for approval.
Is there a second?
Once again, I'm, I'm telling you, man, you're killing me because this, I'm deeply conflicted, but I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
The, my further discussion is, the market has changed in downtown, they are now getting a premium for rent, and for us to be subsidizing to build apartments in the downtown, when you're getting a premium for rent, that, that's, we got to change the policy. And so, once again, you're killing me because I told Tony that I would never vote for another apartment in downtown Fargo, now he's going to beat me up all day, every day, so, and I don't, I won't blame you for it one bit, so, all right.
Mr. Garrick.
I won't be too bad, but, you know, we've had in the past, people come to us and say, if you don't give us the incentive, we're not going to do it to include air, more aircraft at the airport. And they did it anyway, you know what I mean? So when I hear a developer say, I'm just, I'm not going to build downtown anymore, okay, someone will, you'll make money there, because you, you just told me that when you build a one-bedroom, it goes like that. Build a bunch of one-bedrooms. Maybe you won't make a, a large sum of money the first five years, that's how investments work, you might lose some money even, so.
Can I just add one more real quick? It's, the, this is a great thing, our downtown, now people are willing to pay a premium to live in the downtown, that's a great thing. So that's a perfect example of Tony saying, there's a time to stop incentives. You don't just keep them going because they, we've kept them going, and now the time has come. All right. Once again, Tony, I know you're going to, I can just, he's sharpening his knife, he's going to beat me up, so.
Mr. Strand.
Mr. Gilmore, I have a question about defining downtown mixed-use. It's already an apartment building, it's already like a five-plex or something like that in this location, so it's not the new definitions of downtown mixed-use that we're starting to hear about where you have commercial, parking, and living space combined. So this is just another apartment building, but bigger, right?
I mean, yeah, this is an apartment building that'll conform with the downtown mixed-use. If this was still zoned multifamily, you would not be able to put this many units on the site. I don't know if that's answering your question.
The difference is 34 units, whatever, versus five?
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't recall what the previous zoning was, if it was commercial or if it was apartments, so. When we rezoned that block, we anticipated that it would be used by Sanford, you know, and possibly redevelop, you know, that particular, you know, five-plex building, we didn't expect that to be.
But it increases density, right, Jim? The intent was to increase density downtown.
Yes, and allow for a mix of both commercial and housing uses at that particular block.
And lastly, I'm going to use the, the word that we don't like to use, but gentrification is something we need to be focusing on and, and as a general ideal. Do, do we want to encourage people's moving further away from the city center, or do we want to accommodate them to, so that those who've been here or those who work here have a place downtown or within reach of downtown? Even though this is on that very edge, it's still considered downtown, so I'm, I'm concerned about all these issues. I wish we were, I wish there was a policy in place I could support, but I just can't.
Jesse, could you just comment on who's running your apartments? Because I'm, I'm understanding it's the people that are working downtown.
We've got quite a mix. I mean, I've got anywhere from students to students on trust funds, all the way up to 60-year-old retirees, to be honest with you, we've got quite a mix. So, I mean, kind of, we talked about the last city commission meeting, I was in front of the fact that, you know, a lot of my people, even if they are students, work part-time and work downtown. If you go in our parking lot, which is camera-controlled, you see the cars never move. I mean, the people walk to the locations to eat or to, to go to the bars, to go to work and things like that, so, so they're definitely quite a mix.
Thank you.
I think Jim had a, I wish Commissioner Strand would have been at the city, or the, the Tax Review Committee. I think Commissioner Garrick would, would enjoy it too, and the fact that Jim gave us a map of the gentrification situation and, and the low-income housing and how well-versed it is downtown. The other thing I wanted to just quick comment on is we're talking about rents, and I, I can guarantee you, if you think rents are high right now, stop competition from coming in like you're talking about with moratoriums and things like that, and you will see rents skyrocket because there's no competition coming in. There's literally no one's going to compete with my new stuff downtown, so competition breeds lower rents.
Can I say something real quick while you're up there, Jesse? So I want to apologize for, you, you've kind of been caught in the crossfire, and so I want to reiterate what I said. I appreciate you, and we do, we appreciate having you here. I, I mean, we, having a local developer and you live the, you live the life, so thank you very much, and thank you for contributing at the Tax Exempt Review Committee. Your comments are helping make it a better place, so I apologize for all this rigmarole you've had to go through, but I just want you to know, we, we appreciate you, and, and you're part of what makes our, our town a, a good town, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that, and it's been good to have those conversations, especially with low-income housing. And I think there, again, a Tax Review Committee, a lot of that stuff came up as far as the management and things like that, and there's, there's several components with that, and I'm open to those discussions anytime to help.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, and Mr. Craig, I agree, you're a major component in our community and a major investor in our community. This isn't about you, you know, how, this discussion that we're having across the country, people are wrestling with the issues of affordable housing. What we have coming our way is pretty serious stuff in, in the economy that we're all in today. It's, it's not as severe here as, in Fargo, as it is in many, many, many cities across the country. So, so we can learn from what others are doing and, and experiencing and try, try be prepared so that our workforce has housing reachable, reachable, accessible housing to them, so that it isn't about you. You know, Commissioner Grinberg, and, you know, you're not the only one who's used the word, and somebody directly asked me if I'm anti-developers. I'm not anti-developers at all. I'm, I'm pro-growth, I'm pro, I'm, I'm pro a, a, a growing city, but I'm also for a balance, seeking a balance for the people and the developers and the people and the growth, and, and the, and the needs of the people and the workers relative to the growth. And, and if there were no discussion or component here of a tax, a targeted tax incentive, that's thousands of dollars, you know, we wouldn't be having a discussion about what the rents are. That's the only reason we're having this discussion, is there's people asking for public support in building a, an apartment complex. And, and when that is the case, I feel we have an obligation to balance the people's needs and wishes and desires with the, the realities of growth and progress that take place. So I'm not anti-developer, I'm just for trying to find a, some policy changes that can help some people that feel that they're being pushed to the outer edges.
I understand that. I'll, I'll give you guys this, one last tidbit. I will open up my books on any of my projects to anyone that wants to see them. As long as it's not made public, any of the Commissioners or city staff that want to see them, I will show you the spreads and the return on investment, and there's no one that's going to take a five-year loss to build apartments downtown, not with the risks that are involved in it, they won't. But I will, I will help and sit down and have any conversation with anybody that wants to look at that stuff. And I mean, we're talking actual rent rolls.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute break and we'll come back. Call the meeting back to order. Item E, it's a continuation vacation of portions, Second Street North between First Avenue North and Fifth Avenue North, North Dakota RI, Urban Renewal Edition, Second Street North from First Avenue North to Fifth Avenue North. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 6/6/17, continued from 12/4/17 regular meeting. Planning Department has asked this be continued to January 2nd, 2018. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
So agreeable, yes. Item F, continuation from one, to 1/2/18, dedication plot of Second Street North on portions of North Dakota RI, Urban Renewal Edition, Kenny and Devitt Second Edition, and portions of vacated Second Avenue North, Fourth Avenue North and Fifth Avenue North, Second Street from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue North. Approval recommended by Planning Commission, continued to 12/14, 12/4/17 regular meeting. Has asked to request to move this to January 2nd, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 65, Considered Draft, City of Fargo Public Art Master Plan. Explanation by Nicole Crutchfield.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I think by now you've all seen kind of a draft of the Public Art Master Plan, and maybe just a quick highlight for the, the, the people in the public, and we also have many members of our Arts and Culture Commission here with us and interested stakeholders. But maybe just to kick off what we're here about, so for the last year, year-plus, we've been working with a consultant, one of the first actions of the Fargo Arts and Culture Commission, which was established in 2015, was to, and this was based on a, a task force that was developed in 2014, was to develop a public art master plan. And, and in case you're wondering where that origin comes from, in Go 2030, in, there's an Arts and Culture chapter that has the recommendation to also look at arts and culture and the Arts and Culture Commission. And so this is kind of a, a long road from 2010, 2011 to get here tonight, and so just wanted to provide that background. And really, it's about establishing the mission and vision of public art in Fargo. And so whether we're the owner as the public entity, whether we're helping partners develop that goal, or if we're just simply a liaison, a networker on different types of public art. And so the goal here is to define that role and also provide those different avenues. So I'd say the plan is maybe one-half to even two-thirds of, two-thirds of more operations, and the most important part is setting that vision, citywide vision. And so really, that citywide vision is about how do we engage with the community at whole related to public art? And it's important to recognize that public art is part of a larger umbrella of arts and culture in our community. So things like the symphony, the Fargo Theater, the community theater, those are all parts of the arts and cultural ecosystem. Right now, today, we're just simply talking about art in the public spaces and art in where people can have access to those daily operations. And so one of my favorite projects, I'll just highlight real quick, one, because I think there might not be enough people that remember this, is Michael Strand's project. And so wanted to highlight that we're already doing great art, and really, it's about finding avenues for those artists in the community. So Michael Strand, who's now Acting Program Director at NDSU in Visual Arts and Art and Architecture, came up with this project in the 2009 flood where all these people were engaged in art and, and sandbagging and flood protection. And as part of that, Michael Strand called Dan Molly at the time, happened to know Dan, and said, hey, can we get access to maybe 2,000 sandbags? I'm going to distribute them to schools and nursing homes and see if they want to participate. And so here's an example of, I think, Waterford at the time where they're decorating sandbags, Michael brought those sandbags back to Central Garage, those sandbags were filled and into operation. So we actually have images of those sandbags as people go through the assembly line, and as people of those assembly line see those sandbags, brings a smile, brings laughter, brings a little moment of joy. And I believe Michael calls this project Love Letter to Fargo. And so this is an example where if Michael had known Dan and Dan didn't know who to call, you know, within basically five hours, that project was up and going. And so that's just one example. The Skyway mural is an art project that actually was funded through the public, through parking funds way back when, and the Skyway project is part of that. So we are doing some public art, but it, by no means, as we have different staff, new staff members onboard, how do we provide those access for people with great ideas? So the work of the Arts and Culture Commission really is to promote public art, stimulate context and culture and in location. So up by the airport is going to feel different in context down by Osgood. And so how do those neighborhoods engage with those public spaces, maybe have their own art project, and provide an avenue for that, for that work? Through the work of the consultant and through many stakeholder interviews and getting to know people in our community, they identified five themes, and these themes help Fargo identify as Fargo as opposed to, say, Omaha or other Great Plains cities. And so what makes Fargo unique? And so I won't go through all of them, but we can come back to that if you have questions. And so a lot of this also came down to what is public art? So that definition of public art is different for everybody involved, and the plan helps to identify that for, for staff and for the elected officials and for the public at large. And really, public art could be public dollars into it, but it also could be donations, grants funded, developers simply wanting to do something in their lobby and looking for that expertise and an avenue through that work. I think more importantly, too, is we see time and time again the importance of that vitality in economics, and so you can talk to the Chamber and many of the great work in our community that's already talking about art is how it's important in Fargo. The Americans for the Art, which is kind of like a census group for, the US Census for Arts, collects data across, across the country, and I think the top one is one of the ones that's most interesting to me is, as a citizen, you might come across art in unexpected ways. So if you go to Sanford, for instance, and you have an appointment at the clinic, you'll see the balloons hanging in the clinic lobby. Or if you go to the mall, you'll notice many, much public art in the mall. And so you just never know where you're going to come across that. And so our goal is to provide more access for that type of art and find that link. Related to that, the, it could also be temporary and pop-up art. So knowing that it doesn't necessarily need to be sculpture, but it could be a, you know, group that wants to perform in the Civic Plaza and providing that access. Where do they go for permissions? Where do they go just to pop up and have an idea? And so the idea is that staff can help guide them through that. So how will we use the Public Art Master Plan? It's basically helping us set our vision, identify goals, and identify best practices. So many other cities around the country are doing this, and so we're not trying to reinvent the wheel necessarily, but as you see from earlier with the E-Fargo success, we have a lot of nimble and access people with the university and with the people in our community that have great ideas and just want opportunity to play in those public spaces. So there are 10 goals, and there's a lot of questions yet to be defined in how city will do public art, and I would say we're probably not as much about the doing and more about the assisting and the networking and providing that access. And so there, I won't read through all the goals, but you'll notice number five, I think this is Bruce Grubb's favorite, is identifying secure permanent funding, and there's many different ways to come about that. And so part of the next year in 2018, we'll investigate those different partnership opportunities and come back to you with individual-specific items that might affect the budget or might not affect the budget, but just born talking about those as individual things. I think number eight is probably one of the most important things, cultivating the partnerships. There's many people, again, doing great work, and it's really just about finding out about that great work and seeing how we can provide assistance. And so I'll kind of jump through a little bit here. The, again, part of the bigger umbrella of arts and culture in our community, we call this the constellation chart, basically the idea, again, that there's neighborhoods, economic development, artists themselves, school district, park district, we have many different partners as part of this work. And so hopefully, everybody that we're engaging with, including yourself, see yourself in this constellation chart and understand how that network works. Lastly, as part of the project, and you'll see the appendix of public art possibilities. And so as part of that, we did an RFP. We want to help, to help visualize what art could be and what ideas could be out there. And even our Arts and Culture Commission was trying to help define that. And so we did an RFP to seek ideas, and over 40 ideas were submitted. The consultant helped curate those ideas into top 10 top ideas. And just as an example of that, the Fargo Porch Fest was an idea I'd like to highlight because, one, it's low cost, two, it's activating neighborhoods, three, it's allowing music opportunities, and so we might not call that public art, but it certainly fits that definition. And so part of that curating of those 10 ideas, the consultant helped provide technical service to those groups to help identify logistics, say, insurance and costs and things of that nature. And so for instance, you'll see that in the plan, and something like this might cost about $10,000. And so that $10,000 could easily be sponsored by some group or entity that would be wanting to do this. So it's the idea of generating ideas. Some of these ideas have already been done. So Simone and Folkways has already done, have already done the canoe parade. That's one of these ideas that was this last fall. And so it's really that activating a public space. Again, we're already doing great work. One, you'll know about the Fargo project already, but another one just to highlight is, as part of this project, I'm going to estimate around $230,000. The city public dollars were only $10,000, so it was really that seed money to help connect maybe some gap funding. The park district had resources in there, the school district had resources in there, and most importantly, the importance of this to the neighborhood and the skate park to, now we can say north, we have the largest brick sculpture in North America. And so I can talk about, more about this project as you have questions, but it's an example of something that's pretty fabulous in our mind. And the way that children in the school talk about this project, we need to develop a whole program so you can see that firsthand, the excitement. So at the end, this is really about a visioning document to help us and staff in the Arts and Culture Commission work together to implement a vision and an idea. There may be people in our audience that have comments or questions or that you might have of them, but at this time, I conclude my presentation and we seek your approval.
Thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions? Mr. Strand.
Mayor, I move we approve the Public Art Master Plan.
Sir, second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick examples. One of the ways that we can get art going without expending any tax dollars is when we're doing these new blocks that we've gotten because of the flood protection, when we put it on an RFP, we can include some type of art component request, and so that's, that's to me, an exciting way. And then Nicole, you didn't, you kind of skipped over it, but so now you've got, unfortunately, I've got the bug, so now whenever we have these, you know, drains, that's for Nicole. She might not want to talk about it on purpose because it was a lot of work, but it's awesome. And that was basically around Fargo, we have retention ponds, and now they're all potential art projects for Nicole, and I'm sure she'd volunteer. But actually, today, we just had a meeting with a proposed site where another retention area, those are, anyway, so that's exciting stuff that has potential for the future. There's a lot of ways that the city can participate that, that aren't a large amounts of tax dollars, and so to me, that's, that's a great thing. So thank you, Nicole, and thank you for all your hard work.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor Mahoney. I'm just curious, I see the President and Vice President or Chair and Vice Chair of the Arts Commission in the audience, Arlette President and Deb Jenkins. Would you want to say a couple of things at all, Arlette especially as Chair, and/or both of you?
I think Nicole covered it. We're just really excited.
And thank you all and others of the Arts and Culture Commission in the audience here for, for your service.
Mr. Garrick.
There's certainly things, Nicole, here that I like, and I talked to you about this last week, I believe, things like getting us out of the way, allowing Porch Fest to happen without, in removing ordinances that would get in the way of that in a responsible way. Bureaucracy, you know, if you want to do something and have a public piece of art out there on Broadway or whatever, you have to go, you have to cut through all that red tape and let them do those things. So it's obviously good things. The areas I'm concerned are, is when we say we're approving this plan, this plan is not complete for one thing, and for another, I don't know if anyone saw this or not, but it asked for a bump of 100 and some thousand dollars from this year to next year for the art funding. Where that money comes from, we don't know yet. It also has funding for parks. We're not the park board, that we pay property taxes specifically for the park board, and they administer parks, not the city of Fargo. So we all want to be, work together and do these things, that is not our function and we shouldn't be, you know, going into that endeavor. So there are certainly things in here that I like, there are certain things in here that I don't like. So therefore, my question is the same as the downtown master plan from two weeks ago is, when we say that we approve this plan, what are we saying? Are we held to a standard? Are we going to give $400,000 next year? Or is it something that we can do like the Go 2030 Plan, which you spoke about today? If you receive and file it, you can look at it, you can change it, and you can, and you can go off of it for a decade or more like we've been doing with the Go 2030 without saying that we approved this plan.
And I don't want to disagree with you, but we did approve the Go 2030, at least the minutes in the record I have.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and so at least the packet I presented to the city commission or that Jim, so it's customarily to approve a comprehensive plan. What that does is, and maybe Eric can speak to that more so, but what it does is it helps endorse a vision and give staff the confidence and the public the confidence in moving forward. Unfortunately, it's, you know, not to bring back the previous item, but it's a lot like that in terms of by you, the city commissioners, sitting there saying, you know, staff, keep working on this and keep coming back to us with more answers. And we see comprehensive plans differently than policies, if you will, or ordinances, where we are, these are, it's, you know, it's a little hard to describe it, concept and form, knowing that individual projects and individual money requests, I will still follow the purchase policy, I would still follow the traditional budgeting process just because this is in here. What this is trying to show from the experts, Forecast Public Art, who does, he's like the national expert who just happens to live in St. Paul, is, so we were able to use his resources and consult with us for fairly low cost. He, he works on these across the country and uses that as a model. He would say a typical city public art program costs, you know, 600 to 800,000 dollars. We said, no way are we ever going to be getting support of that. And so it's about incremental change, and, you know, we'll work with our liaison commissioners at budgeting to see what seems fair and normal at the time of budgeting. And so this is really just the concept and the staff support.
Eric Johnson, could you tell me the difference between receive and file and approve the Public Art Master Plan?
Well, receive and file is just exactly that. You know, certainly the word approve could have a number of different interpretations, and I mean, I think Nicole's explanation comparing it to something like a comprehensive plan is probably apt. If you wanted to create a more elaborate motion to approve it, I think you could acknowledge that even though it's a working, work-in-process, it's essentially complete in its scope, and you approve the concept and as a, as a framework, framework for moving forward for staff in the future, if you wanted to do that, that, I mean, that would be.
Basically, it's a recommendation, she's asked go through the budgeting, so you're concerned about budget, we still have to go through that, the same policies, we still have to go through that. So it's just recognizing this was the draft that they gave us, it's a well-done draft, and that everybody worked on it really hard, and it's their recommendations, but we have the Commission still has the power to reject or do anything it wants to do with it, so. Mr. Garrick.
I'll just say that I'll be far more comfortable with a motion like that than it would be just say approved blanketly. So if it is just approved blanketly, I'm going to be voting no. If it is more so that the notion that we receive this, we will use this document, you can proceed forward, but it is not complete and we are not bound to anything, then I can approve that, and I'm fine with that. But words do mean things, and words do matter, and that's just where I'm coming from.
Any other discussion? Do you have a motion? Did we already get that? No?
Yeah, I think you did, yeah.
We have a motion in a second.
In a second, okay. Roll call, vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Thank you, Nicole. Recommendation for Parking Commission to increase parking rates for 2018, Derek LaPointe to explain, and I can remember when we were under $100, we were $99, seems very close, and you did go over there on one.
Yeah, we're, we're teetering on that line, but really what you have before you, I apologize, up on the screen here, it'll be 2018, I think on your memo, we had 2017 up there, so these are the 2018 proposed rates. Kind of how we get to this point, we did have a Parking Commission retreat in early November, where we had a lot of discussion about the rates and kind of moving forward with our parking system. We did bring it back to the regular scheduled Parking Commission at the end of November. Again, taking a look at what we have currently, what our occupancies are, where are the high demand locations, and really, what we have here is aligning with the private market as well as adjusting what we have on our current system. I included, obviously, some of the total spaces, the available monthly spaces, et cetera, percent sold, just some general data for you. A lot of that will change as we kind of go through, but we have great technology that we can really monitor our systems and adjust accordingly. And we rely on our experts of Interstate Parking to really kind of judge the system and our, our demand to come up with these rates. So again, the highest that we see is almost 11% at Third Street, and then we have a few that have no change. And last year, we had some significant change with aligning to the market. This year, I think we see some very minimal changes with the, with the standard. So we are looking to recommend approval for, recommend approval for the 2018 parking rate increase. One pitch I want to make sure I get out there, too, is, you know, all of our facilities that are city-owned are free and available after 5:00 PM till 8:00 AM on weekdays, as well as free on weekends. So we're working on to really kind of promote that and make sure they get well-used. We do have some different.
Some of the people are wondering if you could get more signage up, because sometimes when visitors come to town, we don't know they have that free parking option on weekends, so it might be nice if we think strategically where to put signage.
Yep, we got, we got some signage that we're working with engineering on for some wayfinding and as well as kind of penciling out some marketing budget to really make sure that we're capturing our visitors as well as our, our local residents that are coming to use downtown.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2018 parking rate increase as recommended by the Parking Commission.
Sir, second. Grinberg? Any discussion? Mr. Garrick?
Yeah, so usually I would push to make this as low as possible because it's a tax, right? Well, we have to understand, and I hope the public understands, that we're competing in the open market with private businesses, so we can't just have a rock-bottom price because then it would really, it would, it would cause strife with those private businesses. We're trying to stay exactly market, right? Trying to stay right in the middle, not too high, not too low, and that's why we adjust these rates as we do, not to try to undercut anybody and not to try to gouge anybody either.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we want to spread, right? You want to, you want to make sure that we're capturing those high-demand areas as well as giving opportunities and options for people as well, especially, you know, on our fringes, and that's a perception that we have in our community. I mean, you can, you can park at Island Park ramp for a cheaper rate and walk three blocks to work. I mean, let's, you know, we got to try to change some culture as well.
Roll call, vote.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 68, State Water Commission Request Cost Reasberries For FM Flood Diversion Project Cost. Cost totaling $1,105,872. Kent Costin to explain.
Yes, Commissioners, Item 4A is for the city projects in the interior corridor, and Item 4B is for offshore projects for 1.377 million, so we.
Do you have a motion?
Sir, second.
Second.
This is an Item A. Roll call, vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item B, do I have a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Nope.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 69, Consider Task Order Number 20 From Apex Engineering Group For Design Bidding Services Associated Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase 2A, Provenance in Amount Of $1,773,325. Jim Howser to explain.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This task order in front of you tonight is essentially one component or one portion of our wastewater treatment plant expansion. We have kind of a goal in mind to try to break this up in a series of little different phases, and I have a handful of slides to kind of show you what we're thinking about. So where we are today, we have applied for the 2% clean water SRF loan, which we talked about back in November. Again, our goal is to double our capacity at the wastewater plant. We want to get to a design capacity of 29 million gallons per day. We want to be able to treat or accommodate a regional population of about 271,000 people, and then we want to be able to manage peak flows of 50 million gallons per day during rain events, flood events, and that type of deal. To address some of our immediate needs, we're looking at a phased expansion. First of all, we want to allow more local bidders. First of all, we want to allow more local bidders. We're hopefully going to get some more competition, better prices, that type of deal. We think we can speed up the process, hopefully be able to take on full flows from West Fargo maybe mid-2021. But for the short term, for the West Fargo agreement, we do have to get to that two-point-five MGD, which we have allocated to them in their agreement. So there are some things that we have to do sooner than later. So we're talking about a wastewater treatment plant expansion, and we're looking at three different phases. Where we're at today is Phase Two A. Again, it's important for the West Fargo connection. The two big placeholders there are going to be the centrifuge and the UV disinfection, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in the presentation. But there's some low-hanging fruit there that we feel like we can do early on in this process, like some yard piping, discharge piping, there's some stormwater lift station repairs that we need to do, we can install some odor control units, that type of deal. Phase Two B, maybe a year or two down the road, what we'll do is we'll look at procuring some of our equipment. With some of the specialized equipment, there's actually a long lead time. It could be eight to twelve months before we get equipment, so if we procure early on, we feel like we'd be ready to install it once they're ready for it. And then Phase Two C, which is the big excavation, the bricks, the mortar, the installation of equipment, generally what you're seeing at the water treatment plant. So when I talked about UV disinfection, we do disinfect our wastewater before it reaches the Red River. We are required to do that between April and October. Currently, we have a disinfection system, it's a two-step process. We generally add chlorine to kill the bacteria, then we add sulfur dioxide to remove the chlorine to protect aquatic life when it reaches the river. But both chlorine and sulfur dioxide are quite hazardous. This is our contact basin. As wastewater, treated wastewater enters the contact basin, we inject chlorine at the front end of that. Wastewater then serpentines through this basin, it goes to the back end. Before it hits the river, we then inject sulfur dioxide to take the chlorine out. So as you look at an aerial here of the contact basin, if we want to double our capacity, like I mentioned earlier, it would look, look a little bit like this. First of all, there's a lot of constructability concerns, because those shaded areas there are, that's the LDZ and the MDZ. Generally, construction is very difficult in those areas, so we were going to try to avoid those areas. Plus, to do a lot of this excavation, we're looking at probably one-point-five million dollars more than our preferred alternative. Our preferred alternative is UV disinfection. There's a lot of good reasons to do, to do this, but essentially, some of the highlights would be it's less expensive than chlorine. We can retrofit the UV equipment into the existing contact basin. There's no change in the footprint, very limited construction along the river. The big thing is a lot of staff and public safety, we'd be eliminated just to handle the chemicals and that type of deal, so it's good for the people up in North Broadway. And then, of course, better disinfection than chlorine. This is generally what it would look like. You can see these UV units that would just go into the channels of our contact basin. So as you look at the construction from the UV installation, you can see that the construction is much, much less. And here are some renderings looking from the south into the north of our contact basin of what that might look like when it's completed. And then there is a platform to where staff can get inside the contact basin to do work on the UV units as well, too. When I mentioned the centrifuge, this is important for the West Fargo connection. We found that some of our organic loading that we would be receiving from West Fargo might be something that would be surpassing some of our capabilities to treat the wastewater plant. So we conducted a pilot study with Apex Engineering about a year ago, and we looked at different options of how we could handle some of the organic loading and how we can treat it. And we found that if we would install a larger unit, kind of what you're looking at there, we would be able to accommodate those two-and-a-half million gallons per day from West Fargo just with installing one of these larger units. The good thing about this is, once we purchase it, we can use it when our full build-out is complete to the wastewater plant, so it's not a throwaway piece of equipment, it's something that we can use moving forward. So as we look at our Phase Two A schedule, May and June, we'd like to have a bid opening and begin construction in that timeframe. The important dates moving forward would be, we'd like to have the centrifuge operational just for the Fargo wastewater service. And then in 2019, we'd like to have the UV equipment operational, as per a North Dakota Department of Health requirement, so we can start disinfecting before the spring. So your Phase Two A budget, the project estimates, twenty-four-point-six million dollars, and again, it's just a, a portion of the full wastewater expansion, but the design and bidding task order in front of you is one-point-seven million dollars. This is seven percent of the estimate, and generally, the industry standard's about eight to twelve percent. So essentially, today, or tonight, I'm just asking for approval of Task Order Number Twenty from Apex Engineering for design and bidding of the wastewater treatment plant Phase Two A improvements. And one thing to note, Apex was recently selected through a competitive selection process for engineering firms just this fall, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, does UV like it, get rid of whirling disease? Whirling disease?
I do not know. I would think that it would, if it's killing other microbes and other pathogens, and coliforms and E. coli, I would say that there's a pretty good chance.
Well, Dave and I are working on the Red River Valley project, and one of the concerns was, quote, whirling disease. If we take water out of the Bucoska Canal, we had to have a methodology to get rid of the whirling disease, and I was just, maybe look that up for another time, but I, I'm, I don't, I'm not aware, I don't see a lot of whirling disease in surgery, but I just curious for my.
I will look that up.
Thank you.
But on the upside, Mayor, you'll get a fantastic tan if you go down there and stand by those lights. So I'll, just for that reason alone, I'll move to approve the suggested motion. This is a great project, it's going to leap us into working with West Fargo in 2018, and it's absolutely necessary to do that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We want everybody's wastewater now, guys, huh? Okay. Roll call.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Good job, Jim, thank you. Number seven, precinct locations for the 2018 election, Steve Sprague to explain.
I'm not really sure. I thought this was just a consent.
John Strand brought this up as a question, so.
So, John, what is the question?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Sprague. I guess I'll ask this, the, there's a comment in here that says efforts have been made to avoid using schools due to security-related issues. You know, I had eight years on the school board, and before my term ended, the school board passed a recommendation to bring the elections back into the schools. And, and, and they quibbled, or they raised the concerns about how this had all transpired some years prior to that, of when, from when elections predominantly were in schools. And, and, and then at another level, over in, in the State School Boards Association and others, they, over those periods of time, came up with recommendations to, security, safety recommendations for holding elections in schools. So the school board, a couple of years ago, passed this proposal, or a recommendation to bring the elections back into the schools, and it's their sense that the public prefers it. It's their sense that this teaches people civic, students and things about civic engagement, and there's a value to having elections in schools, when the schools have their own elections, two in a row, for their special mill levy, they hold them in their schools. So it's not like they're opposed, and it's not like there's a concern about safety from their perspective. What happened a few years ago, when we passed this proposal to reinvestigate having the elections brought back into the schools, was we were told, well, the county had already established the, the precinct locations for the forthcoming election. So my, my question is this, is I think we should reach out to the schools to confirm, and I called the school board president today to make sure I'm not off-base, I think we should reach out to them, say, do you, are you open, and do you in fact want to have elections when possible in schools? And, and ask them, and I think I know the answer. And then I think we should ourselves decide, well, where do we want elections? Do we want them in churches and public places, or public, or, or schools? And, and, but this notion that they're not, they're security-related issues, I, I think has been satisfactorily addressed by the school district and by the school's policies. And, and I, it's my understanding, it's their desire to have elections in schools. So I hate to vote for this, or allow it go through our, our consent agenda without even a discussion about this community, community value of do we want elections in schools or not, and why?
Bishop Pepcorn?
Just, I just want to add, though, John, but like now, when you go to Fargo North, you have to sign in. And so if you, I mean, they have, it's way tighter security, and so the main thing is you don't want to create something, but if it's, I'm sure you've been there, and most schools know that's how it is. You, you can't just walk in and walk out, and so that would create a problem if you were, if you were trying to have a voting thing, where all the voters had to go in and, anyway, that's.
I think Sandy Hook made us a little bit more sensitive to that.
And I think their policies that they've implemented and recommendations address those concerns. I'd be curious what they are. I'd be curious their recommendations. We don't want to set up for a non, you know, for security issues, but it, I, I just think.
Where are the locations now on this recommendation?
Hotels, Shields Arena.
All over, all over the place.
There, there, so there, there are a couple of things that, that I think have happened. One thing is that we now work with the county to conduct our election. We have an agreement with the county that they'll conduct the election, so the county basically decides which locations, but there is a part in North Dakota Century Code that says that my local board has to approve what those locations are. So we're kind of doing a little bit of a two-step there. But I think if we roll back to when we were actually having elections in schools, you'd see that, that we had many more precincts. We had thirty-nine precincts at that time, and now we're down to sixteen. And one of the reasons that, that we've moved away from the schools were the, you know, if you think of the elementary schools and that type of thing, they're smaller locations, the parking was difficult, they're, sometimes they're not handicapped accessible. I think of the school that my kids went to, and I'm sure the schools have probably changed all of that since, since those days when we had the elections in the schools. And then we had the concerns that, you know, with the security, and, you know, it's, we can certainly reach out to the schools again. I can recommend that Mr. Mount Pleasure check and see if the schools have, you know, if, if maybe there are a few schools that would work, maybe some of the larger ones would work, or something like that. Maybe there's a way that we could access just a gymnasium or a location like that. So if you don't mind, we'll bring that back to Mr. Mount Pleasure for consideration in the future.
And, and I'm, I wouldn't mind looking at this next year's schedule, you know, for 2018. We, I don't know, is this etched in stone that we have to decide these precincts tonight?
Well, the North Dakota Century Code requires that decision be made before the thirty-first of the year preceding the election. So the one caveat, though, John, is that we don't have all of these locked up yet, and we're still negotiating with a couple of the precincts. So, so they could still change, yes.
So that said, there's nothing we can do to turn this upside-down right now, but and no value to that, but if you would, reach out to the schools.
I certainly will do that.
And confirm what I've said, that, that, that's, and they voted on it, and that's their desire.
Sure.
To have some elections in schools, to see which ones would work, and are their policies, and then, because if you have the city open to this, if you have the, the schools open to this, I would hope the county would work with our desire.
Sure.
So what type of motion do you want to put up then?
Move for approval.
Second.
With the issue that you all talked about, Pleasure, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item twenty-six, capital improvement plan.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Commissioners.
Jeremy to do a switch, Tom was going to do it, you took it, huh?
Oh, yeah, I stole it from him.
Okay. Jeremy Gordon to explain.
I could start with a joke, but I'll, I'll keep us moving here. My kids love the new Google Mini, it's just great for jokes. So every year this time of year, every, every year this time of year, we come in front of you to ask you guys to approve our work plan, our capital improvement plan for the next year. Usually, it's about a two-step process with our Public Works Committee. We come late summer for the first, first go-around, and then based on comment, we come around, adjust it, and come around for the final approval. So I'll quickly go through this, stop me whenever you'd like to ask questions. So our, our, our plan is made up of a bunch of individual pieces. So this is the summary of our work. So the categories are on the left side, federal aid projects, we got a number of them coming up this year. Water main replacements, street reconstruction, traditionally, we have four to six of those. This year, they're estimated at about eighteen million dollars. Arterial road projects, we got one of those this year, that's going to be on Thirteenth Avenue west of Forty-Fifth Street. And then flood control projects, those are flood buyouts and/or flood walls and levees. So I can keep, I can keep going, I can go through this presentation, if you have any questions, you can fire away.
Why don't we open up to questions? Are there questions, any Commissioners on this, CIP? Bishop Strand?
Thank you, Mayor, and I was the one who asked this to be pulled off of consent. It's a pretty large item, so I, I don't want to just rubber-stamp them through in a consent agenda, but I guess what, and it was a citizen request, that I, I said, of course, I'll, I'll pass that forward to the commission. I guess what I'm wondering is, is if, for my sake, if, help us understand how this happens, the process, with the Public Works and with the Finance Committee, and, and how we get to this point, and what type of input is in, included in that journey.
So really, what, the flood control, well, I'll, I'll tell you the stuff that I know about, and I may ask others to assist, but the federal aid projects, those are our big projects on our arterial roads. MetroCog, us and MetroCog plan four years in advance with DOT, because those are large-scale, you got to, you got to bank millions, millions away, for, even the DOT needs to do that, to know where their federal aid's going to go. That's, that's part of our working through MetroCog and the Long Range Transportation Plan. The big projects are identified to address capacity, safety, expansion, what have you. And then the water main replacements, street reconstruction projects, those are, you know, we've got, had a pretty good program to replace our cast iron, ductile iron, what-have-you types of pipes. Those are traditionally under old streets.
Bishop Pepcorn, you had a comment there?
No, no, but Jeremy, you should, if you don't mind talking a little bit, so with MetroCog, it's, it's an order that we get put in, so we have requests, the state of North Dakota, we get slotting for, we don't get approved for all these big projects, it's just, so maybe you can just talk a little.
Well, then, Dave, I think you should explain Cheyenne Avenue for West Fargo, how to, you slotted our projects against those projects, but MetroCog decides which one, which order, right?
Right, and that's, so like Fifty-second Avenue, that's going to be another major project, but we don't get to pick, I mean, the state of North Dakota, we put requests in, and then we get slotted, so just talk a little.
Yeah, that's right. So traditionally, the metro area, well, Fargo's gotten four million dollars in urban federal aid each year, and then West Fargo's got about a million. But now, we're combined as one region, so we get plus or minus five million. But the, the DOT has thirty-two million that they have to play with annually statewide, so sometimes we get a bigger chunk, and sometimes we get less. For example, Fifty-second Avenue, that's got about ten million pegged for it, and then the Sixty-fourth Avenue overpass is about ten million federal as well. But yeah, each year, they ask us, hey, cities and counties, what, what are your priorities for the next four years? And we, we give them what they are. So usually, we come up with two, three new projects each year, and sometimes they'll plug it in, and sometimes they won't. So the water main, water main replacements, street reconstruction projects, you know, we know the roads, Tom could probably do a better job on that, but we know the roads that are, the local roads that are falling apart, you know, they've got bad driving surface, bad drainage, you know, they might be fifty years old, in addition to having an iron water main that the street department's out fixing at various times of the year. So those, you know, the, the street department likes to have a dirty dozen list of their worst streets in town. I like to have a, the list of my own, sometimes they coincide, sometimes they don't, but that's how the, the bad roads really comes to the, comes to the top.
Can I jump in one more time, Mr. Chair, and I apologize for interrupting, but the other thing we're doing is, we, we no longer just rely on our feelings, we also have, there's a, there's a machine that measures road quality, and so now, we have an audit of our streets, and there's, if you don't do it at a certain time, the drop-off can end up costing us a lot more. So that's, that's the one thing with the surface, but also with our water mains, the, the engineering department has, they have a map, and, and that's included in there, but they have a plan as to the expiration of, some of our water mains are at the end of their usable life, and so what, what they try to do is, when, when they're tearing up the road, they try to replace the mains at the same time, just because that's the, that's the most efficient thing, so.
Bishop Garrett?
Thank you.
Our general fund budget is, you know, just under $100 million, and the assessment is half of that value. So I mean, it's a dramatic amount of money when you talk about that. So when we talk about ways of fixing the process or changing it, you're changing a very large sum of money, so we have to be very careful when we do those things. But, you know, if new construction is $14.5 million right off of that. So I find it interesting, and with the discussions going forward of how we fix that perceived problem, I think this will be an interesting guide to go by.
So one thing I have noticed, I've been here 13 years, is our water main, street reconstruction projects, usually, you know, sometimes we do them to fix broken street, broken water mains, but sometimes there's an external force that kind of puts us in motion, whether it be development, or a business that doesn't currently, that used to have a sewer going one direction, now it needs a sewer going this way, so city, you need to provide us services, so.
So when you did the area around the new Roco garage, how did that impact? What did you have to do? Sewage, water, everything?
So Second Avenue, we did everything brand-new. And then this year, you'll see.
And that was really to keep with development, wasn't necessarily needed at that time.
Right, right. And then Robert Street this coming year is the block of the Roco as well. So we, you know, we try, sometimes there's external things happening, sometimes there isn't. Sometimes the things are just shot that need to be replaced. So, you know, sometimes, sometimes these are developer-driven projects, and sometimes, most of the times, are staff-driven projects. So I could go through some of this stuff, but the biggest projects for the year are going to be 10th Street, just north of downtown, and anyone that lives on the south side of town, they're going to feel the pain on University Drive, so we're going to fully reconstruct north of the interstate up to 18th Avenue. We're going to do the best that we can with traffic. So we, you know, the plan itself is $120 million, $125 million. So this is kind of a 30,000-foot elevation. And each one of these projects will come to you when it's time to be approved and/or bid. So you'll see these again in some way, shape, or form. And, you know, this is a living document, so not all of these will make it, and some will be added during the year.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I seem to recall, or I do recall, when there was a discussion in our commission chamber about the Main Street project that's forthcoming at some point, and people in the audience and others asked, well, what considerations were put into place? And one of the ideas that surfaced out of that, like when you're talking about the east end of Main Street going over to Morehead.
Yep.
Was the economic implication. What's the impact on businesses? And to my knowledge, my senses, that wasn't typically a part of the formula. But so going forward, you know, and as each of these is appraised or evaluated, I hope we remember those discussion points, too, about what are the, what's the impact on neighboring businesses and things like that. And I, because part of this is, I don't know where this happens. I don't see.
Happens as an engineer. Jeremy, do you want to comment on where the status of the Main Street issue is?
Well. And I'm talking in general. I don't, I don't attend Pubeck meetings, I don't know when they are, and I don't know if they're open to the public, and.
They're all open to the public, and the public can talk at any time.
Okay.
On Monday, on every Monday opposite of the commission day, so we have it next week. Well, not next week because of Christmas.
Are those noticed meetings?
Yeah, they're out there.
You can certainly get an invitation. There is a mailing list for the meeting.
And that's part of my question, is the process. So like Commissioner Garrett says, this is $125 million. It's well larger than our entire general fund. So going forward, if we can.
So Bruce is on it, I'm on it. Dirksen's on it. We have the major department heads on it, so all the different issues are asked.
And I wouldn't consider that necessarily a consent item. That's fine.
We can put it up next time as a discussion, just so you know what we're doing.
Yeah, and you know what? Moving forward, you know, we've talked internally for a long time. We need to have a two- to three-year rolling capital improvement plan, instead of having just one, and you don't know what's coming the next. So Tom and I are going to be meeting later this week to talk about putting a longer list together, but then, you are right, you guys should be invited to, there should be a brown bag, or you should be invited to the Public Works, where this is the first blush, usually in August.
Well, thank you, Jeremy. Part of the comments are the fact that Devils Lake recently redid their planning on what they're going to do in their downtown. They had $300,000 committed to it, and then there were state and federal funds. So it was a good discussion by their commissioner council of what direction they wanted them to take, and they decided to put their money in Main Street. So the same issue will come to us as well, is where do we want to put our money, and where do we want to push the strategy? So I think that comes out of some of the discussions Dave has with engineering as well, but for the other Commissioners, we might do a brown bag and say, where do you want to go?
Good. And thank you for today presenting what you can without much advanced notice, that I would be putting this in the regular agenda.
Thanks, Tom. But I will say, I will add, you will see the DOT just soliciting now for our projects that we would like for, to be added to the years 19, 20, 21, 22. So you will be seeing that through the Public Works Committee starting in January, so the wheels seem to always be in motion. Sometimes they do move pretty slow, but they do keep moving.
Do we have motion? Move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. One other business item, John reminded me of, the task force met on the diversion issues, and I think the two governors made a very good effort of trying to get to a solution, and it looks like we're headed towards a permissible project. Commissioner Pepcorn, you owe me a steak dinner because they did finish by December But, John, do you want to just give a short report on that and how your feelings are of how it went, or whatever?
I would, and, you know, and it was an interesting process to have people from all sides of the spectrum participating at the table. It was really an interesting process, too, to see both governors, North Dakota and Minnesota governors, leading this collaborative effort to try find a meeting, a middle ground that would allow us to go forward. The goals of everybody, the charter goals established upfront, that we wanted to maintain federal authorization of whatever project there is. We wanted to assure certifiability for flood protection in a 100-year event or greater. We wanted to address the impacts upstream and downstream. We wanted to, you know, to make sure that those elements were brought together and that there was a middle ground. The, where I think, I think the commission, I think the task force got there. Where I sense it is, is the technical advisory committee is, half of them are DNR from Minnesota, so they're helping shape whatever we come up with. And when people are talking about the location of the diversion, or tiebacks on the west or east side, or the location and configuration of the southern embankment and the dams, you know, they, the, everything was in the context of, is it certifiable? Is it going to have federal authorization? Will it be permissible? You know, so I believe we got there, and I, my challenge to all of us going forward, and I think this is a serious one, is let's keep these voices at the table. Let's keep the people who have our impacted upstream and downstream involved in our dialogue, and so they don't feel shut out, or they don't feel left out. And let's keep them there, up front and active. Let's make that a priority. I sincerely believe that Fargo-Morehead has protection coming, and that that protection will exceed our needs of a 100-year episode event. Plus, it also gives us the capability of fighting bigger events, up to the 500-year flood level. So this process was really, really substantial. We owe a debt of gratitude to Governor Burgum for leading us and for really learning information quickly. We owe an immense amount of gratitude to Mayor, or to Governor Dayton, and the DNR and the participants there. We had people from FEMA, we had people from the Corps. It was quite a process, and I'll say this, I didn't ask to do this job. I really was worried.
You volunteered. Come on.
I was really worried that we wouldn't be able to come to a place where we could move forward. And I'm an optimistic person. I believe we can and are at that place. We will move forward, even though the details are not all resolved yet about some of the elements of the various components that together create the plan, the project, and then compile together, give us the ability to be permissible or not, and affordable. So it was quite a process, and we really, our neighbors to the east sure showed up to give us a chance to try to make this workable.
So just so the Commission knows, the southern line hasn't been fully vetted yet, but it's going to probably involve 26 more properties and 200 million extra in cost